Call to order the March 27th meeting of the Cary Town Council. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Bush?
Thank you, Mayor. March is International Women's History Month. In case you didn't know, it's also Frozen Food Month. In case you wanted to write that down, too. But it is a great opportunity for us to recognize the incredible contributions that women of every race, class, ethnic background have made and continue to make across our country and our town. Now, March 3rd, the reason you're wondering, why is it March? Well, March 3rd is the 100th anniversary of since the suffragists marched on Washington. And in 1946, in North Carolina, is when Eliza Jane Pratt was the first female to represent North Carolina in the US Congress. And then, moving up to 2009, when we had Bev Perdue, who became North Carolina's first female governor. So, we've made progress. Now, when the 19th Amendment came before the North Carolina Legislature in 1920, it wasn't the first time that we had considered allowing women to vote. And in 1897, J.L. Hyatt introduced the bill for women's suffrage. Unfortunately, the bill died when it was referred to a committee. The committee was on insane asylums, and it never seemed to get out of that committee. Unfortunately. North Carolina didn't have an active role in the passage of the 19th Amendment. In fact, it seems like folks in charge really didn't support women having the right to vote. In fact, North Carolina, I don't know if you know this, but North Carolina didn't actually ratify the 19th Amendment until 1971, a full 50 years after it was made into law. Now, the only, if you're wondering, the only state to wait longer was Mississippi, who ratified it in 1984. Now, here in the town, thank God for Mississippi. Here in the town, we have women in all types of roles. We have our town clerk, our deputy town clerk, our attorney, town attorney. Of course, at the council table, we have many women.
Police chief.
Police chief, thank you. And it wasn't that long ago till the town of Cary made history, when we were the first town in the state of North Carolina to have a majority of women on the town council. You can, if you want to, any of you want to change, we can go back to that and go back to a majority of women, but whatever. About 20%, 21% of our town employees are women, and of those women, 24% of them are in leadership roles. So, that speaks highly to the progress that we've made here in the town. And there is a lot you don't know about how important women are to the day-to-day workings of our country. There are more women than men in the United States. There are more women attending colleges and getting degrees. Yeah, looks good. All the single men are going, yes. More women are attending colleges, getting degrees. More women vote than men. 58% of women over the age of 16 are participating in the workforce. Women make or influence 85% of all purchasing decisions in their homes. Women make 80% of the healthcare decisions. And 68% of new car purchases are decided by women. Just thought I'd throw that one in for you. But we still do have lots of work to do. A proportion of women in our, in the state legislatures across the country is only 24%. And here in the state of North Carolina, less than 10% of the seats in the North Carolina State Senate are owned by women, and 18% in the State House. And across the US Congress, only 18% of the seats in the US Congress are held by women. And unfortunately, every 15 seconds, a woman is battered somewhere across the US, and women still only earn 77 cents on the men's dollar. So, that's one way to look at it, but I think we have so much further that we can go. Today, women are leading GM and Yahoo. They're leading change, and they're leaning in, they're running for president. But let's not forget, these are the exceptions today, and our jobs as leaders in our communities to ensure that this becomes the norm, not just for women, but for all people in all of our fabulous diversity. And we're richer emotionally, financially, culturally, when we all work together, in all of our differences and our commonalities. So, let's make Cary the showcase of what's possible when we're all in this together, a community that really knows how much more we can be when we are all joined together. So, with that, I hope you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. This time, is there a motion to adopt our agenda?
It's moved.
There's a motion, and the second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're now at item 2.1, recognitions, reports, and presentations. Mr. France will present the Fit Cary Month proclamation.
Thanks, Mayor. I would like to ask a couple of Cary's fine women to please join me at the podium, Ms. Sarah Preston and Ms. Alyssa Wright Collopy. And then also, I'd like to ask Mr. Travis Wright Collopy to join me as well. Can't remember which one I'm supposed to go to. Waiting for the mayor to say, move to your left, move to your left. For those of you who may not know, Sarah Preston is our Performing Arts and Operations Coordinator for our Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department. She's heading up the Cary Fit Initiative for us and doing a fantastic job of it. Ms. Alyssa Wright Collopy is our first Hometown Spirit Award winner and is one of the team members for Fit and Able Productions, a company that promotes fitness opportunities for the community. So, thank you so much for what you do, and thank you guys so much for being here. It is my honor, I guess I was chosen, since I'm the liaison to the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Board, not because I'm the most fit Cary Town Councilor. Second or third most fit, maybe. But yeah, I was thinking Lori should actually be up here, and she could turn on her Fit bit. All right. This from the Office of the Mayor, it's a proclamation recognizing April 2014 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary. Whereas, the town of Cary is designated a gold-level fit community, a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community, and a bronze-level walk-friendly community. Whereas, regular physical activity has curative and protective health benefits, which can improve the quality of life for everyone in Cary. A healthier population also means long-term cost savings for our society at large. And whereas, our children need regular physical activity to establish positive health habits and prevent future chronic conditions such as obesity, heart disease, and diabetes. The combination of healthy, active lifestyles and healthy eating are critical for everyone to maintain good health and prevent disease. And whereas, representatives of the National Physical Activity Plan call on organizations and individuals to recognize the importance of physical activity. They encourage citizens to walk, bike, or use public transportation as a healthy, environmentally-friendly mode of transportation. They encourage workplaces to provide more physical activity opportunities for their employees. The town of Cary Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Department provides hundreds of physical activities and health-related programs each month for our citizens. Now, therefore, I, Don France, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the town of Cary, and on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Fit Cary Month in the town of Cary, North Carolina. And I encourage all citizens to become more physically active and support policies and programs that help them do so. Proclaim this 27th day of March, 2014.
Thank you so much, Don, and thank you to Cary Town Council. It's so nice to see all my friends on the council. You guys do so much for our town. But I especially like to take this opportunity to thank you for annually recognizing Cary as a fit community. I would also like to thank the town of Cary and the Parks and Rec Department for celebrating the importance of health, healthy living during the month of April by offering a wonderful variety of programs that serve the entire community. I say with confidence, the programs, facilities, and amenities supported by the town provide the foundation for promoting healthy living in Cary. This foundation is a springboard for other organizations like Fit and Able to make contributions to the town's mission of a fit community. My favorite town amenity, as many of you know, is, and it's grown dramatically over the last 10 years, is the Cary Greenway System, offering over 70 miles of beautifully paved trails for residents to enjoy active family living. I run on trails around the world, and I must thank the town for providing these world-class greenways. The planning, the development, the maintenance of these trails is a huge gift the town gives Cary residents, and it's a gift that keeps giving every day in so many countless ways. Thank you for giving me the honor of accepting the Fit Cary proclamation. This means a great deal to me, and what you do for our town means a great deal to me and the people that live here. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Collopy, and thank you, all of you, for what you do for encouraging and promoting a healthy and, I'm running out of words, healthy and great lifestyle, fit lifestyle, that's the word I was looking for, and it was only three letters. But that's a very important part of my life, and I'm sure it is of many others, and hopefully we can expand that group as you continue your work in Cary.
Well, it's our honor to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now reach, we've now reached item 2.2. I'm going to turn it over to the town manager for his operational update. Mr. Shiger.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will, in turn, turn it over to Carl, our Budget Director, for him to give us an update.
Good evening, council. I come bearing good news about our revenue picture for this year. Our revenue projected surplus for this year has grown since the last time we discussed it with you. We are now projecting a revenue surplus in the general fund of $5.4 million, or about 4.1% above our projected revenues, which is within the 5% margin that we try to maintain each year. Much of what we are seeing this year in terms of revenues come as the result of the rebound of the housing industry over the last 12 months. The growth in sales tax there that you see of just over 1.7 million, or 7% above projections, is largely the result of increased sales in building supplies and materials, along with a fairly healthy economy so far this year. Property taxes, which we had previously been projecting at even, we've seen enough data so far this year to show that at a 2% increase above where we had projected. Much of that is in real property, but we're also still monitoring the situation with the new tax and tag vehicle property tax system. We had not budgeted the kind of bump up in taxes that some had been expecting there, so we're coming in about even with that. But it clearly has not been a system that has implemented quite as well as local governments had been hoping around the state. The permits and fees revenue is also up as a result of increased construction, up 45% above revenue projections. We're adjusting next year's projections accordingly. That combines for most of the growth in our revenues above budget. You can see some of the other areas. Franchise taxes are right now about where we expected them, but we expect that because of the colder winter this year, we'll see a little bit more coming in from electricity and gas through that. Investment earnings, although they are up 38%, they're not up by, but about $100,000, giving you some idea of just what kind of returns we are able to get in the current investment market. The other areas are right about on target, solid waste and recycling, as we've mentioned before. When we estimated those revenues last year, we were expecting that the FY12-13 amount would be a little bit higher than it actually came in, and as a result, this year's revenues are a little bit low projections. I stand ready to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council. Very good. We love good news. Thank you. Mr. Shiger, anything to add?
That's it. But I would like to emphasize and sort of focus on Carl's report about our revenues. They are picking up as they are in, we have just seen in this year. And also, we're seeing finally, after about the last five years, some better revenue picture for the budget going forward. So, a little bit better this year, so I think we'll have a better budget here.
Very good. Thank you. That takes us to item 3, is Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak, I'd ask you to take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. And we do have one public hearing tonight, and that public hearing, if I can get to it, is on the Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. And if I can get my mouse and computer to behave, I'll continue. There's a three-minute time limit for the speakers at Public Speaks Out, and there's a timer on the podium. And for the first two and a half minutes, that timer will be green, and for your last 30 seconds, it will be yellow. And at the end of three minutes, it will flash red. And at that time, I'll have to interrupt you immediately and ask you to conclude your comments, to be fair to all of our speakers, especially since there's a one-hour time limit for Public Speaks Out. And I would thank all of our speakers in advance to adhering to our guidelines. Now's the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite the first speaker forward.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the town council. My name is Scott Hoyt, and I am a concerned West Cary resident. According to the town of Cary Interactive Development Map and rezoning cases of the last four or five years, there are 2,307 housing units moving forward today, proposed, getting ready to move, either in the process or proposed, not including non-approved projects such as Friars Gate 345, the Stip Properties North and South, and some of the other ones. These are simply west of 55 and north of Green Level Road in West Cary, 2,307 units. According to the US Census, in that area of Wake County, every home has one child, school-age child, child under the age of 18, excuse me. 39% of those children are 6 to 11. 30% are 12 to 17. 90, on average, 95% of those kids go to public school. Where am I going? Well, we're going to have 2,307 new children. 865 of those are going to be elementary school age, 682 are going to be in high school. The three elementary schools that serve that area are Alston Ridge Elementary School, which has a capacity of 911 students. There are currently 914 attending Alston Ridge, putting it at 100.3% of capacity. Highcroft Drive was built to house 830 students. There are currently 958, I'm sorry, 830, there are currently 951. That's at 114.6% of capacity. Mills Park Elementary was built for 888. It has 958. It's at 107%. Mills Park Elementary, 1552. It educates 1738. They're at 112% of capacity. And Panther Creek High School was built for 2479 and services 2579. They're at 104% of capacity. To put in the glaring problem a little more obviously, Highcroft Drive Elementary was built for optimal temporary trailer units, temporary units of four. They currently have nine. That nine gets into the 114%. 24% of the elementary school students at Highcroft are educated in a trailer. 24% of the students at an elementary school in West Cary are educated in trailers. That sounds pretty horrible until you get to Panther Creek. Panther Creek was built for six. Now, the optimal number of units is based on art rooms, student enrichment activities, cafeteria, facilities. They were, optimum was six, they're now at 33. Why do I bring this up? Well, one, there's one new elementary school planned, as we all know, E37 at White Oak in Morrisville, right? If they build that to the size of Alston Ridge, which is the biggest, that's 911. That school will be full before it's built in 2017 with what's proposed to go on the ground now, that doesn't, what's approved to go on the ground. There's no end in sight. We've seen numerous daycare centers happening. Keep this in mind when going forward, please.
Thank you, Ms. White. And if you have additional comments you would like us to read, please feel free to send them or leave them with the clerk, and she'll make sure we get a copy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
We're here for a public hearing.
Okay, anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, we'll close Public Speaks Out and we'll move to our consent agenda. The consent agenda item is item four. For the benefit of people watching on TV, we're going to take a moment to review the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. We have minutes, owner-initiated annexation petitions for Herbert Bailey and Cary Oaks Subdivision, ratification of resolutions for SASS Building Key, Patel Brothers Grocery, and First United Methodist Church, Wake County Mutual Aid Agreement, Franklin Heights Water and Sewer Extension Project, amendment to Traffic Signal 14, construction contract awards for the Cary Apex Water Treatment Facility Phase III Expansion and Pumping Station Phase III Expansion, New Hope Church Road ATT Trailhead Settlement Agreement for Blythe Construction versus the town of Cary. Would council members like any of these items pulled for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. And that takes us to public hearings. We're now on item five. Same rules apply for public hearings as applied for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Instead of three minutes to speak, you now have five minutes to speak. Our first and only public hearing tonight is the public hearing on the 2015 to 2019 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan and the fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Ms. Stonedino of our staff will present this item, and we're going to open the public hearing. Council will not take any action this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the town council. Tonight is the scheduled public hearing to hear requests and comments for the use of fiscal year 2015 Community Development Block Grant Grant, annual block, excuse me, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan and Consolidated Plan. The town expects to receive approximately $500,000 in CBG funds for fiscal year 2015 from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The amount we receive is based on a formula related to population, housing conditions, and poverty rate, but is largely affected by the amount of funding that Congress allocates to the CBG program nationally. The CBG program may be used for a wide variety of activities, including housing, public services, public infrastructure. However, the overarching requirement is that the funds must benefit low-to-moderate-income individuals. Fiscal year 2015 will be the 11th year of our CBG program. In order to receive its annual Community Development Block Grant funds from HUD, the town must submit an annual action plan that identifies the projects and programs the town intends to support with this annual grant allocation. In addition to this, the project must, the project must be in conformance with the five-year plan, which is the 2015 through 2019 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. The public hearing tonight is the final scheduled event to obtain public input on the use of CBG funds. Staff has conducted two public community meetings, and we've also solicited input from town departments along with the 30-day comment period for the public, and conducted a formal application process with our nonprofit partners to gather ideas for projects. After the public hearing tonight, staff will present its recommendations for funding allocations to the town council on April 24th. Council will be asked to adopt the 2015 Annual Action Plan and the five-year Consolidated Plan, containing projects for the year for fiscal year 2015. The plan must be submitted to HUD by May 15, 2014. That concludes staff's presentation. The mayor, I will turn it over to you to begin the public hearing.
Very good. This time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Mike Blanchard. I'm the VP of Development for Hospice of Wake County, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. Since November of 2009, we at Hospice of Wake County have been proud to call Cary home. With your support, we were able to create the first hospice and palliative care center in Wake County located right here in the town of Cary. And I hope that you, in reflecting on that initial contribution and support to Hospice of Wake County, will agree that that was not just a donation to another nonprofit organization, it was a true investment in our community. And I hope you'll also agree that that investment has paid great dividends. Since we opened the hospice home in January of 2010, we've welcomed more than 2,200 patients and their family members as residents of the hospice home at the end of life. And in 2013 alone, we cared for 605 patients as well as their family members. And of course, it's important to remember that in our hospice setting, the home is open not just to the patients who are facing the end of life, but their family members who want to join them in the hospice home. Tonight, I'm here to speak in behalf of Hospice of Wake County in support of our request for $300,000 in block grant funds, and also just to speak about the importance of and the value of this program, not only to Hospice of Wake County, but to other organizations in the community, and more importantly, to those that we are created to serve. In the context, of course, of this discussion, we're not just talking about creating housing for people, we're talking about housing for low-to-moderate-income family members or individuals. Since we were founded 35 years ago, Hospice of Wake County has never faltered in our commitment to accept patients of all income levels as our patients and provide care despite their ability to pay. In 35 years, we've never turned away a patient based on his or her financial standing. When we look at the level of charity care that's provided by Hospice of Wake County, we're very proud to say that our level of care is 11 times the national average. So, there's a great commitment, not only to providing compassionate end-of-life care, but to providing it to those without means to pay. In 2013, the level of that care, or the cost of that care to Hospice of Wake County, was in excess of $651,000. We've carried that commitment over to the admission of patients into our hospice home. Since we opened again in January of 2010, approximately 10% of our operating costs have been incurred in the care of, to low and moderate-income individuals. And we certainly project that the percentage will hold consistent when we move forward with the expansion of the hospice home by 10 additional rooms. Of course, of course, of course, since this is a hospice facility, we will be providing not only affordable housing for low-to-moderate-income individuals, we will also be providing access to affordable health care. So, this is actually a double benefit to the town of Cary, providing both housing and affordable care. Of course, just so you'll know, we're not asking only the town of Cary for support in this project, nor are you the only governmental body that we will turn to for support. Wake County government has already committed $450,000 to this project. We're also applying to the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency for a loan, a grant of $300,000, and we will be approaching other municipalities in Wake County, including the city of Raleigh. the city of Raleigh. Since September 25 of 2013, when we began the campaign to raise money for this project, which has a construction budget of just over $3.1 million, we've already raised over $900,000 in support for private individuals and foundations, in addition to the $450,000 from Wake County government. With the town's support through the block grant program, that would put us at over $1.6 million, or 54% of our construction goal, and put us in a wonderful position to begin construction this time next year. So again, I thank you for your, all your past support of Hospice of Wake County, and again, encourage you to include a project like this in the block grant program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Kevin Campbell. I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Wake County. Good to be with you tonight, and we have always enjoyed strong support from you, and I applaud your support for affordable housing with Community Development Block Grant Funds. We look forward to continue working with you. We have a lot of volunteer support in the Cary community, civic groups, churches, and so forth, and they're eager for us to continue to build. As you know, acquiring residential land to build on in the town of Cary is an expensive proposition, on top of that, not easy to find, to come upon, but we have put a piece of land on Evans Road and 1,200 block of Evans Road under contract, half acre parcel that should be able to subdivide into two lots, and we just come asking your support for that, that request of $110,000 to serve two families long-term in homeownership here in the town of Cary. So thank you for your support in the past, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else for this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back over to Ms. Stondino in case you have additional comments.
This concludes the public hearing.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council?
Not this time.
Thank you. We'll move to our next item. It's item 6-1, it's three, it's one of the discussion items, the request for the Chapel Hill Road towns. Mr. Nicholas of our staff will present the item. Council may take action this evening. I remind council that due to a valid protest petition, six affirmative votes are required for us to approve this request. Mr. Nicholas.
Thank you. Good evening. As you know, this is a request to rezone approximately 16.2 acres located at 9475 and 9493 Chapel Hill Road. Properties are located on the south side of Chapel Hill Road, adjacent to the intersection with Fairbanks Road, approximately 2,000 feet east of the intersection with Northwest Cary Parkway. Both of these properties are located within the town's corporate limits. Properties are currently zoned residential 40. When this item was last before the council for action in December, the request at that time was to change zoning to residential multifamily conditional use. At that time, the request included a total of four zoning conditions. These included limiting the uses to semi-detached detached dwellings or townhomes, limiting the maximum density to six and a half dwellings per acre, requirement that 50% of the townhome units have a two-car garage, and the remaining units have a one-car garage, and a requirement that required masonry material on building facades would be increased from 35 to 40%. As you may recall, council discussion at the meeting in December focused on several aspects regarding the request, which included traffic on Chapel Hill Road, sidewalks in the vicinity of the subject property, proposed improvements to Chapel Hill Road required by the comprehensive transportation plan, and also options for preserving the historic structure located on the site. Following the discussion, council voted to table action on the request to allow the applicant additional time to address some of these concerns, including the preservation of the historic house. Since that time, staff has met with the applicant and also with Capital Area Preservation to discuss options for preserving the house. One example of preservation that was discussed included the use of a preservation easement on the structure. Since these meetings, the applicant has indicated that the house will remain in its present location on the property and be preserved. As a result, the applicant has revised their application and the associated zoning conditions in order to better facilitate this proposal. The requested zoning designation now is transitional residential conditional use. Conditions now proposed by the applicant include no more than 12 detached dwellings will be permitted. Other uses permitted will be limited to semi-detached detached dwellings and townhomes. The historic Richards House will be required to have a preservation easement placed on it prior to any applications or building permits for development within the TRCU tract. There will still be a requirement for 50% of the units, or semi-detached and attached dwellings or townhomes, to have a two-car garage, and the remaining units to have a one-car garage. Required masonry material on the building facades will still be increased from 35 to 40%. And a new condition was added regarding community gathering space of no less than 4,500 square feet in size, and to include one gazebo and one fountain. Primary reason for changing the zoning designation since the meeting in December is the decision to keep the existing house. Under the previously requested zoning, the house would have become a non-conforming use since a detached dwelling is not permitted within the RMF zoning district. Transitional residential, however, does permit detached dwellings. Therefore, by changing to this designation, the house will remain a conforming use. The previous condition regarding maximum density is no longer included. Under the previous request, the maximum density was six and a half units per acre. This condition is no longer applicable since under TR zoning, the LDO actually limits the maximum density to six units per acre. Besides the density limit and the requirement for a preservation easement, the only other differences between the previous conditions and the proposed conditions is the allowance for up to 12 detached dwellings and the requirement for a community gathering space. And this is just a picture of the house that will be preserved through the preservation And just to remind the council, the planning and zoning board did present its recommendation on the request at the meeting in December. Their request and their recommendation actually was based on the initial proposal for the RMF zoning, as a reminder. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Question, the valid protest petition, what was the listed objection?
Concerns about development and growth in the area.
Okay, nothing specific to this development?
No.
I listed these on the screen here for you.
Okay.
They included just not knowing the identity of the developer. There were some questions regarding what the best uses of the property in the neighborhood were relative to the adjacent rail corridor, some concerns about traffic on Chapel Hill Road, and there was also concern listed about needing to determine the best uses for all property in the neighborhood relative to commercial development to the west.
But the property that has protested, there is not a dwelling on that property, correct?
Correct, it's vacant.
The person does not live there.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve RE, or 13 REZ-19.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second.
Okay. I'd just like to thank the Patel's and others involved in this for listening to the concerns of many of the council members and what was important to us and our community. I think you've done a fantastic job of taking a good or a great project and making it even better. I hope a lot of others follow your lead in the future as far as when it comes to preserving historic structures in town, and I commend you for your actions. I really, really thank you guys from the bottom of my heart.
I agree. Before I turn it over to our historic expert down there, I agree that it seems like they went through extraordinary lengths to make this work, and it was, it was very impressive to see. Mr. Yurha.
I agree with, agree with you both. Listening to Mr. Nicholas explain how this happened, it sounded like it was as easy as pie. I mean, he just goes through it. This was not easy, and the cooperation and willingness of the applicant was amazing, and also the outstanding work of our staff to do this. I mean, we had to change the zoning, the zoning from RMF to TRCU. I mean, this is not easy along the way to do all this and to get this all done. So both the applicant and the staff, I think, deserves credit on this, as well as Gary Roth from Capital Area Preservation. His advice was invaluable. I think it's a very good use of this property, and I strongly support it.
Other comments?
I'll make a comment. I'm glad to see the, the condition for the historic preservation. You know, one of the concerns that I had raised at the beginning was that there's no communal space here, and that's my concern. Anytime we get one of these projects, these residential projects, especially townhomes that are pretty dense, you know, where are people going to congregate? I'm really glad that you put a condition in there regarding the 4,500 square feet, and I'm particularly glad that you put in the words "at least 4,500 square feet," because the reality is 4,500 square feet is a tenth of an acre, so it's not a lot of communal space. So as you go forward, I would really be thrilled if, when I come over to that project, when it's all built, to find out that you have a larger communal space that people actually can, can congregate there. So I appreciate you putting a condition in there, but I'd really love to see it come to fruition and be the, you know, something that you're really proud of in the end.
Is that good?
It's not typical for me to just repeat what others have said, but I think in this case, I remember I was fortunate enough to meet with Mr. Yurha and the applicants, and I, I remember the very first time we heard this at public hearing, the, the group that were bringing this forward went from "I don't know how this can be done" to "here we are today, this is how it can be done." It was an incredible amount of hard work and soul-searching and vision, and I agree with, I think it was Mr. France who said, "Thanks from the bottom of our hearts," because I think this is a great model for other applicants to use.
Very good. Other comments?
The only thing I would add is I like the fact that they were out-of-the-box thinkers, and whenever you get something like this where it seems almost insurmountable, even when I mentioned an easy thing, "How are people going to get to the store?", instantly staff pulled up a map, and the Patel's picked up a map and said, "Oh, we can find a safe place," because they will want to go to the store. So I think that's, that they are a great model for many of the developers in the area to look at how, what is the best way to work with the community, with council, with each other, with staff. I think all in all, you all have done a fantastic job, and I mean y'all in the broadest sense.
Mrs. Smith, I don't want to leave you out.
Well, I think there's, there's something even bigger here, and that is my understanding, most of these folks are local, and we have so many infill projects, and they always come in with the most minimal accommodations. We seem to have a lot of issues. I can tell you that when this came before us, I, I really didn't see how it could actually address all the concerns that were up here. So, you know, I'm truly pleased and surprised, and it just goes to show that as we have national developers coming in, that we hold them to the same high standard. If we can do it locally, and people can care about Cary locally, then as we start seeing all these other projects come in, let's just remember what we saw here tonight, because I think, I think that's important.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Nicholas. We now move to item 6-2, the comprehensive plan consistently statement for Chapel Hill Town Road towns. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to item 6-3, the developer request to extend Village at the Park-Kitt Creek Road Extension Developer Agreement. Ms. Deugans of our staff will present the information, and council may vote on this item tonight. Ms. Deugans.
Good evening, council. The town entered into a developer agreement for the Kitt Creek Road Extension for the Village at the Park development on April 19, 2004 with Rainmaker 55 LLC regarding the construction of Kitt Creek Road between NC Highway 55 and Green Level Church Road. Under the terms of the agreement, which were amended in 2006, the developer is entitled to transportation development fee offsets in the amount of $598,946.89, and is not entitled to any cash reimbursements. To date, the developer has not used any of the offsets. The agreement will terminate on April 19, 2014 unless council approves an extension to the agreement. Rainmaker 55 has requested a three-year extension to the agreement. As detailed in the staff report, staff does not support extending the agreement for numerous reasons, and recommends allowing the agreement to terminate on April 19, 2014. Does council have any questions that I can help answer?
Questions or comments from council members? Or is there a motion?
I move to approve the staff recommendation and not extend this agreement.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
I understand from the conversation we had with Tim Bailey that a lot of things have changed over the years since this agreement was put into place, and it's in the town's best interest not to extend, even though it's been more historic for the staff to recommend extensions. In this case, it would not be a good move for the town, financially and some other ways as well.
Other comments, questions? If there's a motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Ms. Deugans. We now move to item 6-4, is the town facilities naming policy. Mr. Kuhn of our staff will present the information, and council may vote on it this evening. Wait a minute.
Good evening, council. The purpose of the town's facility naming policy is to establish a consistent policy and guideline for the naming of town-owned facilities. The policy includes guidance on general principles, temporary naming, permanent naming, renaming of facilities, naming for major donations, and then a few other considerations such as the sponsorship policy. This policy is similar to what has been done in the past by council and the town staff in naming facilities, but it just sort of documents that process. One of the things we wanted to do was kind of clarify the temporary naming of facilities, and we have a little description in there about that. And we don't want to cause confusion to the public, to staff, and council if a name changes during the development, sort of similar to how Wake County Public School uses E-37 for a site until a permanent name comes up. So that's what we're, we're looking to do with this. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
And to rephrase what I think you said, you basically don't want people creating a name just to name something, and then later having to go back and rename that, and that may offend people because they are already associating a name with.
Right.
Gosh, I think I said it worse than you did. Not that you said it wrong. But anyway, what he said. Comments, questions?
The way I kind of interpret this is kind of like the Cary Arts Center. It's, when we're building an arts center, we're just going to call it an arts center until we come up with a better name, right?
Right. And so this would kind of document.
We're building a community center, we're going to call it Community Center until we find a name.
And, or like for parks or something, there might be a P1 or something along that line so that we don't get stuck with a name, and then council or staff decide something needs to be changed.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Did we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the town facilities naming policy.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a closed session this evening? I don't see one. And if there's no other business, I would entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
You're stunned.
Visit the town of Cary website at townofcary.org.